We're all set?
Yes.
Wonderful. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you all for coming today. First item on the agenda this evening is review and approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. If anybody has any additions or corrections they would like to share, if they'd be kind enough to let us know. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve.
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have approved the minutes. Next item this evening, public hearing for the Heeser variance request.
In this case, we'll look at it as a vacation as well. So that's the official terminology that they use on their application. And I think what we're looking at is we have a public hearing scheduled for this evening, so we can open up that hearing, Mr. Chair, and then take comments from staff and from our applicant. And then if there's any public comment, we would take that, and then you can proceed with your presentation.
Okay. I guess with that said, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Either of you gentlemen have anything you'd like to share?
Well, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I go through some of the items we have first.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll let our applicant go.
No, good for giving.
Okay, so you've got all this stuff in your packet. Couple of items here just to reference. You've got a memo from the zoning administrator here, just talking a little bit about the application that was submitted to us, and looking for the action that we would be potentially taking tonight on this issue. Then included in your package, you've got emails from our city attorney, who's also present tonight. Certainly, she can answer questions. And then you've got the encroachment agreement from July of 2018, as well as the platted part of the packet there. You show some of the information from the encroachment agreement that was made with the Murrays. And then you also have staff feedback from our city engineer as well, in reference to the project that's in question. And then a previous administrator letter from Theresa back in October of 2018. So those are all items we'll be discussing, I think, tonight, as well as with the application. And then you have your findings of fact that we'll be taking a look at potentially as well. Just wanted to note that the staff's recommendation is negative on this request. There are a number of issues that have been identified by our city engineer, particularly with replacement, the depth of the drainage before it was being replaced. I believe he's identified this as a major issue. The other component is just noting that, from the city's perspective, based on the review that I've had of the files from when it took place, the issue I see is between the previous owner of the property and the current owner of the property. It isn't an issue that necessarily should fall upon the city. So there's no incumbent aspect of this. So just wanted to kind of go through those items, and then if you had any questions with me right away, I would take those now. Otherwise, we can proceed.
If we have any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Well, that said, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you would have anything you would like to share? If you'd be kind enough to come up and give us your name and your address.
Sure. My name's Tony Heeser from 903 12th Avenue Northwest, City of Casson. You already have the application for the variance, and we're asking for two and a half feet vacation of the easement. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that are in the application that I think are relevant. The house was built in 2005. The building permit was issued by the City of Casson, and they allowed the house to be built on that two and a half feet encroachment, or on that easement. The city building inspector approved it on May 27th, or excuse me, on June 2nd, 2005, and issued the certificate of occupancy issued on September 19th, 2005. I purchased the home in July of 2018. Unbeknownst to me, as part of the closing, my attorney from the title company hired Kyle Flat Service to conduct a drawing, and that's what identified the encroachment of the garage into the easement. It sounds like at the city council meeting on the 11th, they discussed the encroachment, and they agreed to the encroachment agreement between the previous owners and the city. At that time, the house wasn't under purchase agreement by me. I didn't realize that any of that was going on, otherwise it would have been at the meeting. The, it looks like the encroachment agreement was prepared by the city attorney. Neither me or the council knew about it, or my council knew about it. They, during that meeting, it was interpreted that me, the buyer, wanted this agreement in place, but I didn't even know that there was an agreement going on. The terms of the encroachment agreement create significant hardship for me. If something were to happen to the garage per the encroachment agreements, I wouldn't be able to rebuild it. We aren't able to build an addition to the property that we had planned. And there's some drawings and stuff included in the packet that we had drawn up prior to finding out about the encroachment agreement. And it also made my property worthless. I'm not even able to sell it with the current agreement in place. So I'm asking not for a complete vacation of the easement, but just two and a half feet of that easement. Prior to that city council meeting on July 11th, 2018, the discussion of the issue took place between the city engineer and the staff, and the city engineer made it sound like there was no big deal, and that 16 feet was enough space between the two houses for this drainage easement. Also during that same meeting is where, at about 57 minutes, this issue was brought up, and it made it sound like we, the buyers, wanted this agreement in place, and that wasn't the case. So I guess what I'm asking for is the vacation of the easement from the street on the south end of the property, all the way back to proposed addition, which is 22 feet behind the garage. I think all the rest is pretty much the boilerplate language that's used for your variance application. Does anybody have any questions with me at all?
I...
Sure.
So your attorney, Jay Hanson, reached out to the seller's attorney and asked that this issue be addressed before closing, right?
Yeah, I don't know that for sure. I guess I don't know for sure.
And I can speak to that, but...
I'm sure the title commitment that your title company sent over to the sellers said there was this issue, something needs to be done about it.
Okay.
And your title company got that encroachment agreement and actually recorded along with the rest of the documents from the closing?
That is correct, yep.
Okay. So if there was an issue with it, wouldn't then have been the time to address it?
Yes, it would have been, had that issue been brought to my attention. It sounds like the encroachment agreement papers weren't given to Hanson Title until well after this took place, to my knowledge.
They were recorded by Hanson Title. What was the date that you closed?
The 13th, July 13th.
In the packet, that was recorded on July 16th.
So after the closing. And I found out about it in October of 2018, when I got the letter from the title company.
So your title company reached out, asked for the agreement, or some kind of an agreement, and got it before closing, or shortly after closing?
Melanie, if I may, I don't know if I don't want to interrupt, but these are questions that I, I'm here on behalf of Hanson Title, and so I know those answers to the question. I don't know that Tony does. So to the extent I'll answer them, if I'm allowed to. I don't know the procedure. I don't want to jump in.
Why don't you step up and then...
I don't want to jump in.
Please, come in.
Sure, okay, thank you. And I'm Barry O'Neil. I'm a lawyer at the Lumen Abdallah from Minneapolis. And we've been working with Tony to try to work through this. And so I do have Melanie's asking questions that I know from the information that my client has. And the fact is, yes, she's correct, Jay Hanson reached out to the seller's, Paul Kilton, attorney, after the issue was identified. And his request for what he wanted didn't, wasn't what was ultimately resulted in the encroachment agreement that was ultimately signed. It didn't, wasn't seen by Hanson Title until after the closing. It wasn't a closing where people sat down and signed documents and looked at everything step by step. The papers from the seller came after, were signed and were closed, and the money was dispersed. So that's how the mechanics of what happened with the agreement. And as Tony mentioned, we've watched the hearing. It was suggested that this was an agreement that was wanted by the buyer. In fact, the buyer and the buyer's lawyer hadn't seen that agreement until after the closing. And so, and if there's other questions related to that, nobody else is going to answer.
Well, but the request for an agreement regarding this originated from the buyer's title company?
Yes, oh yeah. But it was for an agreement to vacate, not an agreement, an encroachment agreement. So that's a, those are significantly different. And it wasn't, like I said, until after the documents came from the seller's side. And the agreement that the city council approved on the 11th was approved, that, you know, the actual agreement was provided to the buyer's counsel.
And my conversations with Mr. Kilton were only ever about an encroachment agreement. There was, we didn't have any discussion about a vacation of the easement.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't party to them, so I don't know anything about that. I mean, certainly, I'm certainly right that whatever he said, he said. But here's, and we, to try to work through this with Tony, we had an engineering company look at the, you know, do an analysis, and that's been provided as Exhibit 6 to the variance request. And I also talked to the city engineer, and initially, you know, he didn't see, I haven't seen a report from him indicating concerns of a feasibility standpoint for the request of the variance. And here's the unfortunate situation that we're in. And if there isn't something done to give relief from this encroachment agreement, it isn't going to just involve the seller and the buyer, because we're going to have to bring an action to rescind this agreement. And I think it's unenforceable for a couple of legal reasons. First of all, the city had already approved this building to stand as it was standing at the time it issued the permit. So when, at the time when the city and the seller, at the very moment of closing, entered into the agreement to basically make the restraints on the property that weren't in place when the city approved the building permit, the city didn't do anything to offer consideration to support that agreement. So I think that's one reason why it wouldn't be enforceable if we brought an action to rescind it. Secondly, I think the agreement itself violates one of your city ordinances. I'm looking at Section 154.046, which involves non-conforming building structures and uses. And subdivision E says, if there's damage to a non-conforming building, which this, since it was, you know, encroaching upon a drainage easement, but would, I think, be a non-conforming building for purposes of your ordinance, that ordinance allows a homeowner, what a homeowner in this instance, if it's damaged, less than 50% of damaged above the foundation, it may be restored as it was in place. The agreement that was entered into changes that. The agreement says that if the garage, and I could look at it specifically, the garage was, is damaged in any significant way, it can't be rebuilt. So, and I apologize, I was trying to look at the video, and there was, one of the council members brought up this very issue that said, wait a second, so if this garage gets damaged, they can't rebuild it? Is that what this agreement is? I don't know. Something along the lines of, I don't, I can't think of a homeowner who would want that. But then I was, like I said, I was presented that as this is an agreement that the buyers need, buyers want. Which, like I said, I certainly appreciate that Melanie had the conversations with Mr. Kilton, but Mr. Kilton's interests were a little bit different than the actual buyer of the property. So that's why, unfortunately, and we've, Tony and Amanda have been very patient with trying to work through this. I've, you know, had a number of conversations with the city engineer. And as I said, at the time I talked with him, he didn't see a significant, I guess, feasibility or practical problem with, you know, vacating the easement to the point that it would need to be the two and a half feet. And at the city council meeting on July 11th in 2018, the reference then was the city engineer didn't see a problem with vacating easement. So the path of least resistance here, and this, I think, all of the qualifications for the variance, 1 through 5, the factors, I think, weigh heavily in support of granting the variance. In particular, this isn't something, I would expect this is a pretty unique situation, that the city approved, you know, an encroachment into an easement. I don't imagine that happens on every subdivision, but that's why I think it's got to be a unique circumstance that the Heesers are in, to try to remedy it. And, but if it isn't remedied, if it isn't vacated, and this agreement isn't rescinded, it is going to involve, you know, basically, as a last resort, we're going to be forced to do something. Because I don't know that the house can be sold in the status it is. I don't know what a buyer wouldn't go, wait a second, I don't want to have my house possibly subject to not being rebuilt if it's damaged. So we've been wanting to work through this, because we think that the reasonable and, you know, least inefficient way to do this is to grant the easement. And like I said, we obtained an engineering report. I discussed that report with Mr. Thea Bold on the phone with our engineer, Mr. Weeners, and that's why we're hopeful that, you know, you've got a Casson city resident lived here and you say 16 years.
16 years.
A very unique circumstance. I appreciate that any city has to really take into account, you know, the impact of any and every decision it makes. But in this instance, it's a situation that, but for the city approving the building permit and approving the encroachment at the time the house was built, we wouldn't be in this situation. So, and yeah, there's a number of different steps where perhaps something could have been done differently, but it's the city's approval of the initial building permit that's left us kind of where we are today. So I've said a lot. If there's any questions, fire away. Okay.
So I'll just make one comment.
Sure.
The fact that you state that you can't, wouldn't be able to sell the home, that's purely speculation, right?
Well, I don't, certainly if you have a cloud on title of the type that you're going to try to sell a piece of property that is standing in one situation, but is subject to possibly not being rebuilt, I mean, that's, I'm not a title insurance lawyer. I'm not a title insurance...
But it's still speculation as to whether you would be a possessor.
It is, I said a little bit. I spoke with our realtor several times throughout this process, and he said that because of the title insurance issue, it wouldn't be able to be insured. Sure, it could be sold as a cash sale, but it wouldn't be able to be insured under a mortgage insurance, just the status that it's in right now.
That's exactly why it's in the status it's in right now, is so that a lender would, so that it could get insurance.
I can't...
So how were you able to close on it if this encroachment is a cloud on title? How were you able to buy it?
I think it's because the encroachment agreement came after the closing.
But it didn't, it was part of the closing. I mean, presumably, your title insurer, your Mr. Hanson, looked at that encroachment agreement before he gave, I mean, you'd have to approve documents before sellers sign them.
Wow, no. It came from the seller's side. It was handled administratively, a title and policy issued. Unaware of the specifics, because they thought they were getting a vacation, which is what discussed with Mr. Kilton. So it's, it wasn't the agreement that would be needed to deal with it, but here we are. We're in the situation. And, you know, the fact is, I grant you, it's speculative that the place will get damaged.
Right.
But it's a contingency that I don't think any homeowner who purchased a property would think, okay, you know, it wouldn't have to tear. Certainly if someone, after they take the house, put up the fence in an easement, they're doing the actions that, you know, they've got, they don't understand those consequences if they do that. But here, a homeowner bought a piece of property that, you know, and wouldn't want to buy it with the contingency absent, you know, some significant, perhaps, concession.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not arguing that point.
Okay.
You know, I understand the fact that this was purchased, and based on the information that we have, purchased unknowing that this encroachment agreement had been established between the city and the seller. That's between the seller and the buyer. That's not between the city and the buyer.
To the extent, though, the city took away part of the interest in that property by entering that agreement, so...
Well, and that's your point. Based on the information that we have here in the packet, I don't have any evidence here that shows that the permit allowed the encroachment. I don't see the building permit or the flat that shows the structure.
Which I have some insight on some of this, because there's been times that I design homes for a living, so I've submitted plans to be, you know, built, and contractor will come back to me and say, you know, you're building on a corner lot, your home's too big. Overnight, I redesign the home so it'll fit, because somebody didn't give me the right setbacks or something like that. A normal setback on 90% of all lots is probably eight feet on both sides. And actually, when I'm looking at page 27 of the application, there's actually, you know, the survey actually shows both houses are over the easement. But there's a difference between building over an easement and building over a setback. You can't build over, an easement you can. So when I look at this, the builder chose to build over the easement, both builders on both houses chose to do this instead of going back and redesigning their homes or whatever, which is not a violation of a permit, because you can build over the top of the easement, and you do take the, you do take the risk that if something is damaged or whatever is going on from there. So I think that's how this kind of came about, but I don't think it stops him from building an addition outside of, you know, yes, you have this here, but it's equal to both properties that the setback ended up being eight feet versus the 10 on both properties. So I think, you know, the builder knew what they were doing, they were fine with it, and ultimately, that's how it proceeded, and the homes got sold.
Well, but I guess you know the mechanics of it more than I do, but I mean, it's Exhibit 1 is the permit. The permit was approved.
Right, and the permit, you can build over an easement. Yep. You cannot build over a setback, but you can build over an easement, not recommended.
Right.
You know, but you can build over the top of an easement, and ultimately, all of these homes are typically designed to maximize the lot, maximize the space, probably with eight feet on both sides, and going from there.
It's no different than building yards barns over a utility easement.
Correct.
You can build it on there, but if they come through and say, hey, we're putting in new power lines, you either have to move it or lose it.
Right.
Well, I don't know if that would have been the case when the city had approved. It would have been pretty interesting to see what happens if something were to happen to this house, and it hadn't been sold to Tony. What would have happened if the city had approved?
But the house adjacent has the same issue.
I understand that.
Okay.
They, you know, I don't know if they have an encroachment agreement or not. They stand as...
I don't think you need an encroachment agreement.
They do.
Okay, all right.
Do they?
Okay.
It was done the same time this one was...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't remember that. But then they're still there. They knowingly entered into it. And I don't know what the city's, you know, full arrangement or what that was. So it isn't going to be something that just goes away unless this, you know, can be done in a fashion that, you know, rescinds this agreement, because it's not something I think that can be enforceable. And unfortunately, we don't want to have to do this. But if we're in this situation...
Isn't Mr. Heeser in the same position as he is now, even if this encroachment agreement is rescinded? I mean, he still can't, still not recommended to build into an easement.
Well, he'll have the clean title without an encroachment agreement that wasn't in place when the closing happened to his house.
Right, but he's still not going to be allowed to build this addition and further encroach upon an easement.
Well, the variance request will cause that, because as I said, we went through the feasibility study. The feasibility study lays out why it doesn't, it's not an undue risk to that drainage line to undertake the 22 additional feet that this addition proposed. And that's what the feasibility study was for, and that's the request we're seeking here. And so whether or not there's an addition or not, the agreement is something that's going to have to be dealt with. And it will. I mean, I, like I said, we aren't pushing to do that, and that's why we appreciate the process we've got here. We're here to answer questions, and Tony's here to answer any other questions you have with him. But it's, I guess, from my standpoint, I don't, I haven't seen, like I said, the memo from the engineer is different from the information that I have had, discussions I've had with him. He didn't suggest to me that he saw a risk of any significance to the city, or a limitation on what the city could do with regard to that drainage easement or that drainage line with regard to maintenance, repair. And like I said, back before everybody knew this was a problem, he stated this council, or represented this council or someone who had talked to him at that time, that it was fine, the city wasn't going to have a problem. So I'm at a loss to understand why it, the city can't entertain this, a way to fix this problem. That the city, when it approved, issued a building permit, issued a certificate of occupancy, and when it negotiated an agreement that the buyer of the house didn't see until after closing, and the lawyer didn't see until after closing, which took away rights that a reasonable homeowner would expect to have, I understand that you city officials are charged with important duties to, to take into account how any decision impacts the city itself with this unique circumstance, as has been laid out in the variance request. You know, we feel supports the variance request and ask that it be approved. Any other questions, or? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My recollection of the engineer's recommendations is just a little bit different. When, I remember he, at the meeting in 2018, he didn't have any concerns with us entering into the encroachment agreement. He thought that what we had left would be sufficient to allow us to maintain the existing stormwater main that goes right between those two homes. His concern, I believe, in not supporting a further vacation of the easement is if the city has to increase the size of that stormwater main because of...
Development?
Yes. That was his concern, and that was like he was not recommending a vacation of the easement. But he didn't, I mean, the garage is already there, wasn't recommending at that time that two and a half feet of the garage come down. So he didn't object to the encroachment agreement, but I don't believe that that translates into him supporting a vacation of the easement.
I think that's probably fair to say, based on my conversations with him.
And then there's a letter here from dated May 8th, I think, that supports that as well.
Is that something that we can see?
I believe it, I think it was in the packet.
Well, I didn't think that it was in the packet. Okay. Does this come to you?
Yes.
Well, and I guess I, to answer Melanie's question, even if this variance is denied, something's going to have to be done about this property, because it's not going to be acceptable for this property to be subject to having... for this property to be subject to having to not be rebuilt in the fashion that was brought. So it isn't something that I even bring up lightly, and it is absolutely seen as a last resort from this, from me, myself, and anyone, anyone else's involved. But something is gonna have to be done, so.
One of the questions that I have, if I may, the garage is already standing on that two and a half feet, so the likelihood of the city putting in a, a bigger pipe that's gonna extend into that two and a half feet is pretty, you know, I would say, right? So is there a chance that we can just vacate that two and a half feet? So the, you know, just two and a half feet that the garage stands, just to give me a clear title, I'm not asking for the addition or anything like that. If, if we can write it in a way that where the garage stands, it's legal to stand there and there's nothing clouding my title, I guess that seems like a compromise.
That's what the encroachment agreement is.
Except for the wording on it.
Can't replace it though.
Can't replace it.
It can.
Only if that's, well, let's, let's pull that out and take a look at that.
Substantial damage or minimal damages, yeah.
Should the garage or any essential part thereof be totally destroyed by fire or other casualties, this agreement shall immediately terminate. In the case of partial destruction, this agreement may be terminated by either party giving written notice to the other party specifying the date of termination.
So if we can get rid of those two lines in there, I think that serves all of our purposes, right? And I don't see how that would affect the city, and I know that would solve my problem, a part of my problem, I guess, as, as far as selling the house or being able to sell the house if those two lines are taken out.
Which two?
The one that says that total destruction and the line after that about partial destruction. If it didn't say anything about destruction, that garage can be rebuilt right where it is.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, if that, if it's that simple. Obviously, I can't build my addition, so, you know, I have a lesson learned, but if the garage can be rebuilt and I can sell the house with a clear title, I think that solves some of the problems here.
That's, that's the house that you believe you bought.
Right.
And that's the house that if someone came and was looking at a house and saying, hey, this has a garage. But I guess other than their neighbor, I don't know that there's another resident city castle that has this contingency that if their garage is damaged, they're not gonna be able to rebuild it. I...
There's a few.
Perhaps, but I don't, I, it hasn't, I think there isn't any situation, but I, if that's, you know, Tony's correct, that that's what was understood was being bought. And if the third stall, you know, like I said, most people buy that, that's a, a premium upgrade or something that people want. So he's right, the destruction piece that causes the problem that we have to recover. And to the extent we can talk about an amendment to that as opposed to a full variance, that perhaps would solve that problem.
So you're still seeking a vacation of the easement, so that if the house does, is destroyed and, and you choose not to pick it up and move it two and a half feet and rebuild it?
Right.
Because it can't be, because I think it's at the easement on the other side.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's super tight.
Yeah, it's one of the six feet.
Yeah.
The, one of the, the first engineering report done by the WSE.
Yeah.
They talked about a trench box, some sort of box that could be built over this thing to protect it as well. Is that an option that we can look at to, to get the, it vacated? That's gonna have to be vacated?
Well, I don't, I don't think that's needed unless there's construction being done. That was necessary, depending on you on it. That was something that we discussed for purposes of trying to do the addition. If the house as it stands is vacated, so all that, without the destruction piece, then that's, that's what someone who bought that house independent of all the other stuff, believe they bought.
So you're seeking a vacation of just where your garage approaches into the easement? Not, you're not building an addition into it?
Well, that's what he, that's the amendment he's making, at least by his questions today. He would like to...
I'd like to build the addition, but if that's off the table, give me a clear title, I'll imagine.
He'd probably slide the addition over two and a half feet and still get it to fit.
Kind of, yeah. I mean...
I, I understand your request, so I mean, yes. Question that I have is what is our normal process with the city if somebody builds over an easement?
An encroachment agreement.
They typically get an encroachment agreement, and so when this home was built, that wasn't done.
Does it always have to be?
Let me, let me, let me clarify. When an issue like this comes to light after the fact...
Yes.
Then what the city does is an encroachment agreement.
Right.
So that we don't lose that easement. We're still entitled to that easement, but we're not gonna make him take down two and a half feet of his garage.
Right.
Only if it were to go up in flames and is, is, you know, completely destroyed, do we get that easement back. But we, but we're not vacating that. Whole point is to maintain the easement because it's the city's easement.
So if I wanna build over an easement, I can do it and not have an encroachment agreement prior to, or as, as the landowner, I would wanna make sure I get that in case the city says, no, we're not gonna give it to you in that situation.
And if the city needs to come in there and do the work, they're just gonna take out whatever you built. And they have the absolute right to just tear down what you built in there easement. If they need to get in there to do things for upgrade.
Yeah, I don't know when he spoke to him.
Does that make sense?
It looked like that.
Yeah, we don't usually sign off with an easement. I think this just got missed when he signed off on the building permit.
Right.
Well, I just, that's just the way it is.
On the safety distance. So, because we don't usually sign off when they're encroaching into an easement. We tell you, you have to move it out of the easement.
Right. And the challenge is once something's built, nobody goes back to double check, was it built in the right spot, until, I mean, basically, there's been enough things that have built, been built in the wrong spot that they now have a place. A person like Kyle's flat service that goes around and makes sure that, you know, they're getting what they are agreeing to.
Right. If I could ask a question. From the city's certain standpoint, since you build and get permits, I mean, how is that not viewed as, you know, the city's concession to the spot that's there?
I, I think it's because the builder goes ahead and does it, and, you know, he may know that he's building over the easement, but ultimately, he's gonna sell the home and say it, but sometimes, you know, the builder isn't aware that he did it or going along. And, you know, when these homes were built, they may have been, you know, kind of a different process.
When does the inspector go out and see the two and a half feet?
I don't think there's ever an inspector in any jurisdiction that goes out and verifies the two and a half feet.
Ever.
Well, never been on a house before.
Verifies easements.
But they...
Verifies the house in relationship to easements.
No, I wouldn't say there's ever anybody that does that.
But this, in this instance, he signed off on?
Uh, no, he signed off on, on agreeing to the, to, to the building permit if I'm correct. And ultimately, you can build over an easement if you want to. You just don't get an encroachment agreement if, if you go ahead and do it and nobody's the wiser. I mean, my opinion is the builder didn't even know he did it, because he did it twice, also the standard eight foot setbacks. That's my thoughts.
Well, I thought the setback here was ten.
Right, but a normal setback on normal lots that don't have a drainage easement is typically eight foot from a setback. So it's, it's an easy mistake to make if you don't, if you're not aware that there's a drainage easement right there. So...
I think in our side yard setbacks in residential are one, six and a half feet.
It is six and a half feet.
Yeah, yeah. So, and you're seven and a half feet from the lot line. So you're within the, the normal setback, but it's the drainage easement that's greater the problem.
Sure, okay. But, and I think, Tony can certainly speak for himself on this, but I, if, if the language regarding the destruction is not part of where the house is now, that's something that it sounds like you could live with for now.
Well, it's better than a flat, no?
Exactly, that's...
Well, and regarding that, that's outside of our purview for this commission.
Oh, I understand, I understand, yeah.
So we can't make, you know, any decisions on that whatsoever. We can certainly make recommendations, but we can't make any decision regarding the encroachment or the vacation or the changing of the language of that agreement. We can only deal with the variance requests that's...
I understand. And that's, we did try to figure out how procedurally we're supposed to do this. So I think Tony did the legwork to figure out how, how can we present this to the appropriate commission, run the proper channels. But to the extent that's something he can live with, I can tell you that from the need to get involved in, you know, or hornets nest, I think maybe that's the term I use, that we want to avoid, that's something then that could avoid any potential need to do something to try to rescind.
Isn't this, wouldn't this be considered a variance of that, that easement though? Because we'd have to, we'd have to grant the...
Vacation, I would be asking for vacation.
Oh, yeah. Well, but to your point, even if you were in agreement on this, all you're doing is recommendation. That decision goes elsewhere. So we understood that coming tonight. But that's...
Discussion going on?
That's where, like I said, that can prevent the, you know, the gnarly problems and put us in a place like I said, a homeowner would expect that they'd be able to be rebuilding if they bought a house. It's a condition. If we're done, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Are we done? Okay. Okay, we're done. And so you'll, can I just ask them, is your procedure, then you'll issue a recommendation one way or another, or is it definitely gonna be, how, how does the, I guess, amendment to the request get changed? Or is this something, given that it's not, it's something we need to take to the council to ask about, or...
Well, yeah, I mean, all decisions at the end of the day are approved by the city council, the elected officials that are cast in. I am a volunteer, there's a few of us that are volunteers here. Mr. Zloinski and Mr. Burton are city council members, so they are kind of our pipeline, pipeline to the city council. But this guarantees, this body guarantees an open debate on the matter, and everybody gets, gets their thoughts and opinions here on the matter. And, yeah, I think we try to balance out the needs of the city and, and the needs of the citizens here and try to find a solution that works for everybody. I'm being very jangly in how I answer your questions, but yeah. At the end of the day, I'm a volunteer. So elected officials make all the decisions.
What, the all powerful planning commission chair?
I am a volunteer, I am a volunteer. But, and I, perhaps then, and I, I don't mean to monopolize this, but to the, to the extent that the, there's the variance request and then there's the variance request with the asterix, how, I guess, for the city council members, perhaps you, how procedurally, if that would be entertained by the city council, should, you know, Tony and we make that part of the process?
Sure, well, I guess my expectation, Mr. Chair, would be that we'll discuss this further and that they'll come up with some sort of recommendation. I mean, it may be no, I mean, that's possible. I'm not saying it will be, but, you know, that's a possibility. There are a number of allegations that I kinda put in my, my report too, just so, you know, they'll make their recommendation, we'll sort of let you know what that is.
Okay.
And, you know, of course, let you know, and council will take up that recommendation on the twenty-seventh, you know, whatever it is. And that would be the time where, you know, just physically, if you disagree with the recommendation, you know, we advise you to, you know, come to council and be able to, you know, in essence, appeal that, even if, you know, if it's not maneuverable. So that's kinda how the process works, so.
Okay.
All right.
And then it's, then you, it sounds like what you said, that we'll receive whatever the recommendation is ahead.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let you know, you know, whether it's electronically or, or even a letter or something like that, we'll let you know what the recommendation was, and then you'll have an opportunity to respond to that, you know, if you desire to. If it's not something that you're comfortable with, then obviously, you'd wanna respond to that. If it is, then, you know, that would be kind of the process flow, so. You know, but this fulfills our requirement for a public hearing on the process, so we won't have necessarily have a public hearing again.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Tony, a foot and a half vacation would just take your house out of easement?
I think it's two and a half.
Two and a half?
It's two and a half.
Two point two feet on one side and two point three and a half on the other. Two and a half feet.
So how many feet does that leave in between the two houses?
Uh, twenty minus four and a half is fifteen and a half.
Fifteen and a half.
My math is right.
How many feet did you say?
Fifteen and a half.
Fifteen and a half.
That's what you said.
Yeah, and it is right.
Okay.
I can pull up my calculator, but I tried to...
Does that, those points don't, they're not the same spot on the easement?
No, the, the house, the house is in a little...
They're different angles? Okay, well, that's, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be fifteen and a half from point to point. It'd be larger.
It would be a general fifteen and a half, yeah.
How big is the storm sewer?
Fifteen inch HDP.
Fifteen?
Yep. While Melanie's doing his math over there, I'll, I'll ask some questions here.
Twenty inches outside.
Yeah. Um, I don't know how many places in the city of Casson that somebody has built over the top of a drainage easement, but, and I definitely understand your, your concern, your question. I guess I'll ask Melanie a question is, from a title standpoint, is there any reason that he doesn't get, I mean, a clear title to the property and everything is clear, and if he goes to sell the property, it, it is noted that the home is over the top of the easement, and yes, the potential person has the same challenge that he does that if, you know, I mean, I feel it very rare that if there's going to be a fire or something like that, but I understand. Is there any reason that the home can't go through a fairly normal sale, in your mind?
Not unless the specific buyer objects or their title company objects. But it's my understanding that, so that the reason why a lender would wanna make, have this encroachment agreement is so that if the city has to come and do any maintenance on that site, the house does get damaged.
Right.
Because they're insuring this, this property. They wanna make sure that if something happens to it, it can, you know. So they're concerned about the encroachment into the easement. We do the encroachment agreement to address it so that they know that the city is not gonna come in and take down that two and a half feet of the garage if we've gotta work on that easement. They're assured that the property, that they're insuring is not going to be destroyed.
Right.
So I don't, in my opinion, I don't think it's a cloud on title. I don't think it makes the title unmarketable. I think that it, the, the request for it to be addressed came in the first place because the way it was, was unmarketable. And, and as far as, and I don't know what Mr. Hanson's process looked like, so I'm not gonna, you know...
Which, which I can understand, when you bought something, you didn't think that your home was built over the top of an easement, or you felt that everything was corrected as you went through. So the struggle that I have with it is what can of worms are we opening up in the city that now every builder can go and build over the top of an easement, not ask for anything, but we've set precedence. Now they can come back and say, well, we wanna be able to, you know, to, to do all this, or the city has to try to say, no, it's a hard line, you can't build over the easement, but I don't think that's in our business. So, I mean, I, I definitely understand your, your concern and what you're, what you're trying to do. And, you know, I design houses all the, all the time, trying to maximize a lot and do everything. And in this situation, I wouldn't have done what these builders did, but they did, you know. And so not knowing what else is out there, because right now, I mean, your neighbor is gonna come back and say, well, Zepers, I want the exact same thing. Well, now, how far does that go across everything?
There's a little difference though. It's the neighbor sawed an encroachment agreement, signed the encroachment agreement.
Yeah.
Agreed to it. This happened, like I said, it was approved on the eleventh by the council. Closing was on the thirteenth. It came over with the back of the papers. It wasn't something that Tony or Mr. Hanson saw that, you know, had, had ability to, to try to revise at the date of the closing.
Yeah, and I, and, and timing is always a frustration and how things happen, you know, like there's...
Someone kinda kind of, and I'm not an attorney, I'm not involved in real estate transactions on any level, but Mr. Hanson knew, hey, we've got a hiccup here.
Right.
Yet he's still allowed the closing to go through without getting all of the details and the hands of the correct people with enough time to review them. And I guess that really kinda sticks out in my mind is where things got tripped up in this whole time.
I'm gonna read, you know.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to read and get my head around these a little bit.
But I can tell you, Mr. Hanson didn't see the agreement before it was presented to the council and represented as being requested by the buyers.
But he did let the, the closing proceed.
As I said, if papers got signed, they got sent to his office. That, it wasn't the closing of people approving.
But that's ultimately why we all hire closing attorneys and try to make sure so our interests, you know, the buyers and sellers' interests are all protected. And something happened here where the seller, you know, it was kind of, well, let's just, you know, make this happen and get it through. It's the buyer's responsibility to make sure that it's taken care of and, you know, or the buyer's, the buyer's attorney at that point, closing attorney, responsibility. or the buyer's attorney at that point, closing attorney, responsibility.
I think, you know, you look back at the tape and it was pretty clear that it was representing the title company as how it was presented to the council at that time. Yeah, I acknowledge that it was, there was a statement made that this is in behalf of the buyer that came later in that session. But right from the onset, it was made clear that it was a request for the title company to do this.
But it wasn't, because the title company was Mr. Hanson. It was-
No, this was Kilton.
It wasn't factually what happened, because Mr. Hanson didn't see the agreement. It was Mr. Kilton that had the conversation with Melanie, so. And, so that wasn't accurate.
I, so, it, from Mr. Heiser's paperwork that he submitted, it sounds like he told his representative that he wanted a vacation of the easement or something else.
Well-
That somehow got lost in translation, because that never made it from Mr. Hanson's office to Mr. Kilton's office to me.
To you.
All Mr. Kilton and I ever spoke about was an encroachment agreement, because that's frankly how the city handles these kinds of issues, when we realize them after the fact. He was fine with that, sent it to him, he didn't have any issues. I assumed that the documents would be exchanged and everyone approved and-
The communication was from Mr. Hanson to Mr. Kilton for a vacation. There was no additional communication or back until after the papers were signed and the city approved. So, it wasn't ever that Mr. Hanson asked for an encroachment agreement. He wasn't, and no one was aware of it until it came in after the fact. So, the representation on the 11th that was being presented as advocated, I guess if you will, by the title company, just wasn't, and I understand, you don't know what Mr. Kilton, his communications had, just as Mr. Hanson didn't know what you communicated with him. So, I understand, you know, that sort of-
I don't see any burden on the city because of that poor communication.
Hence, that's why they're here today, asking for, to go through the formal process. Yep.
But the city can avoid, you know, it will have to be taken care of.
I'll go back to, why does it have to be taken care of? You can build over the top of an easement.
Because this, the method of how this happened, as I told you, I don't think the agreement can be enforced. And it's, I'm really just looking at the destruction piece, that they would have to not build it in the fashion that they bought it. And I don't think it can be enforced when it's done in the fashion it was done under the circumstances in this case, this manner. So, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
But we're here to discuss the variance, aren't we?
Mm-hmm.
Joe, any additional thoughts, comments, questions, sir?
I don't know. I'm torn. I understand the want to not have this over the two and a half feet. But I also am in the camp that I really don't think this is the city's problem. I, this comes back to the fact that Mr. Hanson didn't do his job and let a closing happen without having all of the proper paperwork. I, I don't think we should be vacating our easements. And that's pretty much where I'm at on it. So, I guess I'm, at this time, I guess I'm more of an, you know, thought on it.
Thank you. Dwayne, anything more to say?
Well, I, it's a culmination of a bunch of errors. And the city's in their, in their best movement forward was to create the encroachment agreement to allow the structure to stay as it is and allow the sale to move forward. So, you know, to me, this is between the buyers and the sellers and their attorneys. Regarding the variance, I just don't see this variance going forward. If he wants to pursue a vacation of the easement, that he's got to take up with the council. So, that's outside, as far as I'm concerned, is outside of our action regarding the variance.
Mr. Thompson?
Do we have any encroachment agreements anywhere else? Or what is the, what is the proper procedure if I, if I'm gonna come build a home, I can ask for an encroachment agreement?
Well, like I said, the encroachment agreements typically come after we've found an error.
Okay. Okay, so typically you would say, "Well, no, we're not gonna let you build over the top of our green."
Exactly, because we just see enough.
Go, right, okay, all right. And so, okay, and so the original time this came about, it still would have had to go through this exact same process, and it would have delayed the sale in, am I correct on that? But if they would have wanted an encroachment agreement, we would have had to go through this same process before the sale of the property took place.
If they would have wanted a vacation of the easement, do you mean, we would have had to go through the same process?
Because it would have been, it would have either been a variance or a vacation of the easement.
Right.
Not, not the encroachment.
Okay.
Because that happened because it was after the fact.
Right, okay, okay, got it. Okay.
That answered my questions? Mr. Sheldon?
I agree with what Dwayne and Aaron had talked about. You know, there was some balls dropped in this one and I think that we should somehow try and keep an eye on stuff like that. You know, any of these guys building over these easements. I know it happens a lot. And there's, when it all comes down to it and somebody has to do something, you know. I don't like the fact, we, I'm also scared of the fact of if this were, we were to change anything, what does come down the pipeline too with other ones? But also want to work with you too.
Not here.
You know, I don't want to see anything bad happen, that's why we're here. We just have to make a sound judgment on what we can say. So, I think the council would be a good place for this one.
Mr. Zelinski, sir?
I'm torn. Like you, I mean, I would hate to be in your position. The only thing that I can't quite grasp my head around is you bought it, the closing company closed it, and then you found out later that there was this issue. Why didn't you go after somebody at that time?
I tried to work with the title company at first, but ultimately that's why we're here. I mean, we're doing everything that we can to make this work. He's representing the title company, I'm represented by another gentleman. So, it's not that I didn't try. I, at the end of the day, and I'll be honest with you, I spent a bunch of money on plans on this addition that we had planned up. I found out about this home, you know, out of the country in October. So, we bought in July and I found out about it in October. So, no matter what happens, Eric, he's right, we do need to fix it somehow to make it, make it work. And, you know, obviously, I would love if you could vacate it and I can put my addition up and we all go along our way. I understand your concerns with that. But, so what's the compromise? Well, how can we make this work for both of us, you know? If it's just rewording it or, you know, I don't know. How are other encroachment agreements written? You know, are they, are they written the same way? Yeah, well, it doesn't help me, you know. Yeah, I appreciate you guys putting the time into it. I mean, at the end of the day, I'm stuck with a headache that I had no idea existed until after the fact, so it sucks.
Well, and I think that's why they have Kyle's Flat Service running around, doing all this so everybody's aware of what they're buying, because so many properties have become an issue. And it's after the fact when people choose to go do things.
You know, builders are gonna try to use every square foot that they can.
Yep.
Because every square foot is dollars.
Yeah.
And they're gonna build just as big as they can. And like we've said, you can build on an easement. But that's when it gets to be very after the fact.
You build at your own risk.
Yes.
And I understand all the title companies want to move and, you know, get these sales to go through and stuff, but that's where we end up with, you know. You hire somebody to protect you from this, you know. And, but there's gotta be a way to fix it. You know, we gotta, at the end of the day, we can't leave it like it is, so we, somehow, we gotta fix it.
I want to throw a question back, but why can't we leave it the way it is?
Because I can't sell my house.
But you can sell your house.
I probably, yeah, I mean- Yeah, there's certain circumstances where I would be able to sell it. Obviously, it would take probably a cash buy, and you're gonna take a big hit on it, right? I'm gonna go upside down then. So, I've lived here for sixteen years, I really don't want that to happen. You know, I don't want a bad taste in my mouth with the city yet. I just, I want some help getting, getting through.
But ultimately, you're, you got the sale to go through with all of this stuff being-
So, my mortgage company, so I have a VA loan, I'm a veteran.
Okay, thank you for serving.
My mortgage company, thanks, my mortgage company didn't even know about it, so-
Right.
There's a huge issue with that too, so.
Yeah.
It's not just the, it's not just a little bit of wording on a paper. I mean, it's really, really not good for me, so.
I think that the mortgage company is probably where the request came from, I had to guess.
Yeah, somehow, it doesn't, it didn't get to them until the sixteenth, but we closed on the thirteenth.
On Friday, Friday to Monday, the thirteenth was a Friday.
Yeah, so, you know, all this comes in after the fact, and I don't even know about it until October, but then, then now it's an issue, but you've already signed your name on the dotted line, so you're stuck with it at that point, right?
I, I am sympathetic to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
How about you, Mr. Commissioner? Thought?
Well, I shared mine.
Okay.
It may be a grossly inappropriate question to ask. And I'm really playing devil's advocate in this whole thing. But if you look at the risks associated with, that the city is absorbing by granting this variance, is there anything that the owner of the home can do to offset those risks? To indemnify the city from any potential downstream issues? If they go in and do utility work and it does damage to the home? If, you know, he enters into these pursuits at his own risk? He can't come back and pursue the city?
I think his mortgage company is probably not going to invest.
Yeah.
Because their, it's their investment to, you know, I mean.
And obviously, if we, if we had an issue where we did have to repair that, of course, we would try and work with the homeowner.
Right.
In this situation, even though he's got the encumberment agreement, I mean, just because he has it doesn't mean if we've had to put it in, especially if it was an emergency or something, it might get kind of messy and it might be damaged. So, I don't know, I mean, I, and this is just my perspective. And if we are gonna push this to the council, I think that's perfectly fine. You know, I think a variance would be more appropriate than a vacation, because what a variance means is that there was, there was a problem.
Right.
And so, we're varying from the norm, which is what some people have kind of said, "Well, we don't want to give this carte blanche to developers and say, 'Yeah, go ahead and build everything.'" So, if they had to come and get a vari, I mean, vacation, we're just saying, "Oh, it's your property now, you do what you want with it." If we're saying, "Okay, this two and a half foot piece is a variance," we're gonna say it wasn't correct. You know, something got screwed up, we feel bad for the resident, we wanted to help them. And maybe if that's the attitude we come in with is, "Say, I'm sorry, this is all screwed up, we just need your help." And that's kind of what the variance is for, more as, you know, from my perspective, you know, the legal action aspect is what I'm concerned with, because, you know, why there wasn't legal action with a title company and now someone's coming in and saying, "Well, we're gonna take legal action against the city." The city didn't really have the, you know, there should have been suits before. If they're coming to us, it's because, I mean, I just, I don't want the city to get involved lawsuit, I think. But at the same time, like, the threat aspect of it is something that I don't appreciate very much myself.
What can of worms are we opening up for future developers who want to build over utility easements? And then saying, "Well, you gave that guy a variance." So, I mean, you basically open it up that if you do it once, do you?
I don't think, I mean, it's a variance. It's not a vacation. It's the standard, it's the standard is the standard. And to be honest with you, we're gonna be talking, well, hopefully, pretty soon here with Laura, about a new set of code.
Right.
Which frankly, I mean, that's the note I put, "Can't build over easement, put it in code." Okay, I, I mean, this would be the time to change that, if we feel like that's an issue and want to eliminate for the future, which I would think would be prudent, frankly, you know.
Then it should just be called a setback and not an easement.
No, to your point, Tim, the variance, the application is from the front of the garage to the back of the addition. So, we're perpetuating the two and a half foot violation into the easement.
But he adds, has to change that just for the garage at this point?
Well, but that's not what we're asking here.
No, I, yep. But we can-
I, yeah, if he wants to amend this just to the existing structure, then I can see moving forward with the variance, as Tim has suggested, versus the vacation. But again, I mean, that's not what we've been asked to address here tonight.
Exactly.
I agree.
But I think he's also asking for some direction.
Yeah.
And we're not going to give him an answer, he's asking for direction.
We can certainly handle that at staff level. You know, if, if that, you know, the council can be apprised of the situation. I mean, this is informational for me. I can bring this to the council and generate a report saying, "We had this conversation, we have this video to show what you guys talked about." If he would like to amend that, we could still bring it to the, we had the public hearing. We can amend that, he can bring a request to the council that's amended, and we could still proceed in that way. You know, it seems like we both, there's good arguments on both sides of this. So, I mean, that would be my suggestion, if that's something you're open to, maybe limiting that request somewhat. But it would still allow you to have that variance of that smaller piece that would allow the structure to be intact, then that would be the idea I would have.
I guess I'd like to see the, you know, how it's written. If it, you know, if I'm selling it and I show that there's no risk to the new homeowner, then you're gonna have to tear your garage down if something happens to it. I guess that's, that's better than a no.
That would be the idea behind, that would be the idea behind what I have.
Because we need the encroachment.
Yeah.
If, one more time.
If an agreement, if a, if a variance is given, not a vacation, does he still need the encroachment agreement?
I think so.
I'm gonna, I, I don't think so either. My concern goes more to whether or not a variance is actually appropriate in this circumstance or whether the vacation is.
I mean, I guess in that case, can we just vacate the piece that he's asking for too?
That's what I'm asking, yeah, we just vacate.
Instead of asking for two feet all the way along though, but just the part that's covered by the garage itself.
The existing structure, right?
The existing structure, not all the way from the street to the back, but that piece that it's built on top of.
There's probably what, thirty-two feet?
And then the driveway is on there too, so it's, yeah, the structure and then the-
Driveway's gonna be over easement.
Okay, yeah, yeah, the garage is a, I think, thirty-two.
Just do your structure.
Yep.
The answer, I mean, the answer to that is yes. Can the council do that? Can the city do that? Yes. I, I'm going to recommend it, but to your point about setting a precedent of vacating easements, it makes me uncomfortable.
But lesser of the two evils, if he rewrites this to just the existing structure, give him a variance for that two and a half feet of just the existing structure? Not an addition, nothing like that, not vacating, is that lesser of the two evils?
Yes.
Okay.
Because there's been a number of points raised and a number of questions yet to be answered, and since the current application is in total and not just part, I'm gonna move to table this to allow the homeowner and the city to get together and discuss options to bring it back to the next meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Any more thoughts or comments before we proceed?
When's the next meeting?
Uh, when's the next meeting, I'm sorry, it's the second.
I think it's June eighth. What have we?
No, it's coming outside.
Second week in June.
It's the second month, I think it's the eighth.
We're off on Monday this month.
June eighth.
Okay.
We have a motion, we have a second, there's no more comments. All in favor, say aye.
Who is the, I'm sorry, who has the second?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hopefully, we carved out a Bible path forward for you, sir.
I appreciate it.
If there's any thoughts in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, I'm sure I violated a number of policies and procedures in that I just feel a little bit better. Talking to you, I think so. We're all here, I mean, I've got everybody.
Uh...
Somebody said that was in the last fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
Why did I?
Sorry, Laura. I'm so sorry.
Better, better, better wake her up.
That was like fifteen hours.
She's awake, she got her nap in, she's ready to go. Come on.
Uh, does anybody need a break before we...
Yeah.
Take a quick one, because I gotta get to...
Can you use reference, sir? You know? I remember, I was telling you, the highway was worse. It was on preschool Texas. Exactly what it said.
There you are.
Yeah, that's right.
Can you do it? Oh, awesome, okay.
I hung up school.
Man.
The school? Because those papers are missing, it's all on deck. And we did work on the place. I can't, you know, have Linda work on the city. It was plain as day.
What's this hall sign?
I think, I don't think it's...
I think it's...
Papers in the deck.
Well, the owner of the house has to, it's an awkward lot.
Whoop, just the question becomes...
I didn't really see anybody. You're floating heads.
We have a, we have a six and a half foot setback.
The legal intake.
So why add a drainage easement? Why add a drainage, don't you have a drainage setback? I mean, why are we, you know...
Just clean it up so it's just...
Right, right.
You either have a drainage setback or...
Yeah, you have a setback or, I mean...
If you clean it down just a little bit, it's not...
I know that I've designed the housing, I know that I'll go off, I'll like... Hey, there we go.
You're sitting in a really precarious pot.
I said, I built it.
This is Paul. We'll pick you back up again.
Now there's a flat service running around. To make sure there isn't any issue, because there's been way too many people that have built it, be anywhere.
Yeah, if I have a...
Builders continue to...
I have a microphone right here by the computer too, so...
But, but, you know... The challenge becomes a title company that are gonna start trouble. They have a lot to sail through, so then, how many more of these do you have? That was my question, how many are out there in the city?
In fact, the thing is, we don't...
They're taking the wordage of that you are not gonna build a lot of houses. If he had a fire, nobody's gonna say, oh, he's building the house, the garage backs away, the way it is.
He's, he's more worried about selling it now that...
We've also gone through that, where somebody wanted to rebuild part of all of their garage, it was on a property line, and they, I, I think it was just a conversation more likely to go ahead and do it. There was a mechanism placed in there, but you're absolutely right, I don't see something... But at what point, like, if he, you know, in the, in the situation where his house burns to the ground, he wants to rebuild it exactly how he had it?
He can.
Does that, does that easement agreement go away? Because technically, it says...
No, because he can build over easement.
No, we wouldn't allow it.
Oh, okay.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't allow the burn.
This was a mistake, whoever signed up on the building permit did check the plaque, because we don't allow people to build in a drainage easement when it's caught.
So should it be a drainage setback instead of a drainage easement?
No, because we have other easements too, and most of the time, five and a half feet, or six and a half feet, beat you off your five foot easement.
Right.
But we have spots on the edge of town, lots, that have a ten foot easement.
Right.
So when people are calling and saying, I wanna, you know, put a shed in my backyard, we say, well, the setback is six and a half feet, but you have a ten foot easement, so we say, we suggest staying off your easement. Because if you put your shed on the easement, we're gonna plow it over.
I didn't wanna tell them, but his pipe, his pipe was sitting on the neighbor's property, but the drainage pipe is running through the neighbor's property, so he had a little bit of benefit.
Well, but, you know, my sewer line actually goes through my neighbor's yard.
Oh, sure. And we have a lot of that in the old part of town, where the sewer pipes go, cleaning up this all over the block.
East through the old... I play a lot of football in your backyard.
Yeah, that's, that's where it goes.
Yeah? And is that because there was no sewer down?
It's really, don't bump the table.
No, there's sewer, I don't care.
By the way, you're gonna sit more far in here.
But I meant, yeah, but...
They were looking for my sewer line, they couldn't find it, so you know, with the whole stove.
So what did they, so how did they redo that under your notice?
They didn't, I've got the blessing of cities to...
So your, so your sewer still goes out the backside?
Exactly.
Over to the neighbor's house? So how does that happen?
I have no idea.
If you have a bad effect, then that's a... All those old sewers were all that hole. No, they were actually, uh, like, paper shaked.
Well, Laura, Tim's not here, but the rest of us are back, so...
My parents had theirs cleaned out and walked down the street.
Yeah, if you want me to get started, that's fine, my name is... Are you guys ready to get started?
Yes, yes, yes. Take it away.
Sorry about that, more of a...
All right, good evening, everyone, this is for letting me present this evening on the ordinance update. Included in some emails or in your packet were the executive summary of all of the changes, as well as a clean version of the first draft of the entire ordinance update, as well as the redline version. The redline version is obviously very difficult to read. There are issues just because of how we have reformatting. So there are sections that you are, have specific questions about, in particular, what was redlined. If you want to email me those specific questions on changes of wording, that would probably be the most effective way, then I can look directly at it and make sure that, to answer your question in full. Beyond that, so this evening, I'm just gonna walk through the, kind of the key changes that were highlighted within the new executive summary. If we have any questions off the spot that you would like me to share that I can, please let me know right now.
We put the no, no building over easements into the city code. Linda says it is.
I did just write, I did write a note to myself that we should check the easement language.
There we go.
In particular.
Thank you.
After the amendment, so. All right, so I'll just jump in. The, the draft that you see, we have, according to the subdivision, we're dealing with a number of chapters, which is under, all under the land use title of your city code, and those involve chapters one fifty through one fifty-four. As seen in the executive summary, there are not that many specific changes within chapters one fifty, one fifty-one, and one fifty-two. However, as noted, the definitions section that is currently within your building and construction chapter has been moved to their own chapters. Similarly, the floodplain zoning district management chapter has been moved within the zoning ordinance. So there's this moving around of content, which is both in numbering differences, but the, the main takeaway is, other than new definitions being added, there's not a lot of differences in much first read. So, then moving forward, within subdivisions, there are a few areas that we wanted to focus on in order to make the subdivision process a bit more clear and consistent, as well as aggressive overarching decisions that the city had highlighted. So, details regarding development agreements and what would, what elements should be required or should be included within those development agreements, as well as language surrounding financial securities and insurance and other details regarding that have been added to the beginning of the subdivision chapter. The review process for all of the different types of subdivisions has been updated and standardized, and it matches the same format as that within the zoning chapter, the administration processes in the zoning chapter. In general, all of these requirements are the same. Your, what is currently called the general development plan has been renamed to concept plan, so as not to confuse terminology with just general development plans within the PUD process. Additionally, design standards have been clarified, and in the case of stormwater design, has been expanded. We still need a final review by the city engineer over the standards to ensure that things meet the, what the city is hoping to accomplish through subdivision. Last month, we talked about the changes within Articles one and two of your zoning chapters. This is general provisions and administration and enforcement, which is to re-highlight those changes. All of the review procedures have been standardized and organized to follow the same format, and as I mentioned just before, it is also in the same format within the subdivision ordinance. So all procedures now follow the same, are much easier to understand and how they relate to each other. Two new review procedures have been added. These were kind of happening in certain cases, but not all cases, and so these are now, these suggested changes are to kind of solidify this on the administration, the administration side of things, including the minor site review and then major site review. As you'll remember from last month, minor site review is for single-family and two-unit residential properties and does not require in anything that would not necessarily require a building permit. So this includes tent location, driveway permits, things along those lines. Major site review is for all other uses, and the level of detail would be higher for those and require an assessment of things like parking, screening, all of those performance standards and development standards. Another significant change is that the PUD review procedure has been moved to the administration section. It was under your general regulations as PUDs were under PUPs. Where, where I'm proposing that the city utilize the rezoning process for PUDs and adopt PUDs by ordinance rather than as a PUP. And I'll be going into that a little bit more in, as we move through the different zoning articles. And there was an expansion of enforcement sections within the Article two, the administration and enforcement. Articles three and four, the key changes, these are your zoning established and base districts. Key changes, and this is some new information for you all, so we can certainly chat more about this if you have a question. The recommendation to change your agricultural district to a development holding district, and to call it as such. Currently, the city only has three parcels that are zoned agricultural, and most of them are within the right of way of the highways. And so this is more of a change that will impact future parcels that are annexed into the city. It's meant for those newly annexed properties, as well as possibly if the city or property owners want to have undeveloped, existing undeveloped properties come into this district. It would allow for the continuation of existing uses, but any change in use would require a rezoning, and that rezoning must be in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the future land use designation within there. This would get rid of kind of the conundrum that the city has run into in the past of annexed properties coming in as your R1 districts, and then that being in conflict with your comp plan, but seemingly having to allow what's allowed on the zoning if it's proposed. So this should continue that. It also will make sure that any properties that is, has an existing use and is coming into the city may continue that use, and that continuation includes regular expansion or other elements, intensification of agriculture, for instance, from, from horticulture to livestock would not be allowed. But, that would be considered a change in use. And that also kind of clears up our uses tables that we don't need to include all of the different agricultural uses anymore. Some other changes to the base districts, there's been some renaming of districts. The current R2 district, recommending renaming that R1A. Your CM, your commercial manufacturing mixed use, should be renamed the I1 district or industrial, one, or business park industrial. Your M1 then to be named I2, which is more of your heavy industrial. And then, in relation to the renaming of R2 to R1A, adding in a new district between R1 and the R3 districts of R2, being your mixed residential district, allowing for some of those missing middle housing types. The organization of your base districts has, of how they are presented within the code has been shifted. Uses at, as well as lot standards are now put into tables, so you can see, so if an applicant wants to see where in the city am I able to open up my coffee shop, they can just go to a line on the east table and see, okay, it's allowed in these four or five different zoning districts, whatever this east table says. Within that table, we are now using, in addition to permitted and conditional use permit, the permitted with standards as a use type. Permitted with standards means that the city are within, later within the code, under use specific standards, there are specific standards tied to that use that need to be met. However, that those are reviewed administratively and do not require a conditional use permit or a public hearing. And all of these changes will have an impact on your existing zoning map, which would, the updating of which would, should go along with the update, updated zoning ordinance. And we'll discuss that further if we have time at the end of my presentation. Article five of the zoning chapter is special districts. These are zoning districts that apply in special circumstances. Your floodplain chapter has been moved here. There are two floodplain overlay districts, the floodway and the flood fringe. I know that there has been discussion at the beginning of this process to remove flood fringes and to make all two sides. fringes and to make all, to, uh, make all floodplain, to regulate it as floodway. As the city and the county, excuse me, as the county and the DNR are updating the flood maps and once those are ready, there will also be, there will likely be a requirement for an update of the floodplain ordinance. I think the best time to address that would be then. Another big move that is new to the planning commission is moving PUDs as a zoning, considering those zoning districts and ordinances rather than conditional use permits. The reason for this is that historically, in a lot of cities, PUDs, when they are processed as CUPs, it frankly makes them easier to lose track of. The documentation, if those, if the specific standards for the PUD are only documented within a resolution or within an attachment to a drawing, those elements are easily lost. And when you go through a PUD as a rezoning, as an ordinance amendment, that then becomes codified with your ordinance and it can easily be referenced. A lot of cities are transitioning to the rezoning and ordinance models. And in particular, another reason to do that is that an ordinance amendment for a PUD is considered a legislative action, while a CUP is considered a quasi-judicial action. And the city has more defendability for a legislative action if it's ever questioned later on. So, the transition of these PUDs into being rezoning kind of takes two different elements. The first is establishing any existing PUD, which is maintained through CUP conditions, that those get to be allowed to continue. And as long as they maintain the conditions of their CUP, they would continue as such. We recommend that they be rezoned, the base zoning, as planned unit development six district. That would put them specifically in the ability to maintain their CUP conditions and move forward as such. Any new PUDs coming forward or any majorly amended PUDs of existing ones would then become their own PUD district. And the naming convention, we could figure that out with the city, but other cities that are doing this, it's just PUD1, PUD2, et cetera. And those would be added as a section within this article of the zoning ordinance. We could, we, I will be providing the city with a template or a sample PUD district ordinance. But typically, the elements that would be included within that ordinance language would be a reference to development plan exhibits, so the drawings, your utility plans, your grading plans, landscaping, all of those would be adopted by reference. Within the ordinance itself, a list of allowed uses and any use specific standards that apply to the PUD, any, or the lot and site dimensional standards, if they are the same as your R1 or your R1A or what have you, those could then just be referenced rather than listed out again. But if there are any additional or new standards, those would be listed there. And then, any development standards, any additional landscaping, screening, parking requirements, things along those lines that are in addition or specific to this PUD, those would be listed there. And that's where you're different. What is currently your condition would be, is now codified. Article Six of the zoning chapter is the use specific standards. And this includes standards that have been established for any use that is identified as permitted with standards or conditionally used permit within the use table. I'm not going to go through how, all of the different standards. Many of them were already established within the code, others needed establishing. I did, as trying to go through these elements, tried to get away from every single use that had something along the lines of, if next to a residential district, then a setback of X feet is required. Instead, for all non-residential uses as well as your multifamily, I believe multifamily's on there, but within the site dimensional table within Article Four, a common setback for those types of uses in there adjacent to a residential use. There are some uses within your use specific standards within Article Six that have additional setbacks even on top of that, if it's appropriate, if they are located adjacent to residential district or use. And then finally, your Articles Seven and Eight, these are your development standards as well as your sign regulation. Development standards include performance standards for properties, that's your noise and glare and other common elements that any property would have to abide by. Off-street parking standards have been updated. We're trying to establish that every use that is in the use table also has an, a related off-street parking standard. And within your landscaping requirements, those have been expanded as well as made slightly more distinct and between your landscaping, buffer yard and fences, that each of those are related, but there are specific standards under each that need to be met. And that, so those sections have been expanded and explained. Your natural resources section have included for erosion control, a grading permit process and requirements added for that. And finally, the sign regulations, no significant changes have been made. So, those are the major changes that have happened within the draft ordinance that you have with you. The next step will be finalizing the ordinance documents, the draft documents. We'll be setting a deadline for edits from the city attorney, city engineer, other city staff, as well as any edits or comments that you might have. I have not set that date, but I think probably a month out or so, to give everyone enough time to kind of feel familiar with things. Get, for P&amp;B members, get as detailed as you want or as detailed as you don't want. And then, those elements can be sent directly to me via email. Other updates within the code, obviously grammar and spelling, things along those lines, as well as formatting issues of, if you spell out the number one or you write with the numeric numeral, all of those things will be made consistent throughout, as well as updated cross-references and state statute references. In addition to the actual draft documents, and there are then amendments to the zoning map, kind of identified three different elements that pertain to that. Identifying existing properties with a PUD and identifying those property owners and the proposed rezoning of those properties to PUD six, which would allow them to continue with their conditions as-is. And then, any amendments, they would then become their own new PUD district that is There are amendments in name of districts only. These would not require a rezoning or notification to the property owner, as it is really just a change of the district's name and that's, those are changes that are happening within the zoning ordinance. And then, there's amendments to zoning districts that require a rezoning of the properties and/or, or, and notification to the property owners. After preliminary analysis of what those changes might look like, I have identified those amendments that are a major priority. Those would be changes that are needed where rezoning is needed to comply with the comprehensive plan. And then, there are minor priority amendments where rezoning would bring the property more in line, excuse me, with the code and the comprehensive plan, but rezoning could wait until property owner requests it or the city could be proactive. And so, those are the two different sort of elements there. You have some maps of what those might look like, and these are obviously still drafts. But before we get into all of that, I know I've just talked a lot about a lot of different elements and want to see if there are any questions, questions, things like that.
It's got to take a little while to digest some of that. I think if they have any more questions, maybe they'll just email them right to you.
Yep, yeah. I think that sounds good. So, I'll just quickly walk through the map adjustments. Again, these are not in any way final or these are my interpretation of what might be proposed, but they're certainly from the planning commission, from the concerns of property owners and everything like that will be taken into consideration before any action or anything is actually even proposed officially. So, here is your existing zoning map with your existing zones. This is recolored to match more traditional zoning color schemes. And the colors for same or similar zones are the same within here just for easier interpretation. So, here's what I would recommend as your full city zoning. Anything colored here is showing all proposed changes from my perspective. These elements are the ones that are changed in name only. So, that is your, your R, your current R2 being changed to R1A, your current M1 being changed to I2, and your current CM being changed to I1. These are the areas that, in my opinion, are major priority changes in order to comply with the comprehensive plan. As you can see, this applies to a lot of your commercial districts. And as well as the large area to the west of town that is currently designated, or, excuse me, currently has the zoning of M1, that direction has shifted from the comprehensive plan's perspective. However, I don't believe that it is appropriate to zone those proactively to your R2 or R3 at this point. Instead, zoning those to your development holding districts makes much more sense. As then making the rezones, staying compliant with the comp plan at any point when they are ready to be developed. There's a shift in south of the downtown core, a lot of your existing CM properties on the side that are, that is closer to 57, I'm recommending that those be changed to your general commercial district. The C2, the purpose statement has shifted a bit, as well as the standards within it. And I think makes more appropriate for those properties there, which are distinct from the more business park uses in what is the remainder of the I1 business park and light industrial district. Similarly, the industrial uses within the downtown core, those at some point need to become more of your commercial. And I believe, even though it would create non-conformities, I believe that now would be the time to do that. Minor priority changes. In general, all of your, what I see as the low-hanging fruit of your R2, the new district for R2 mixed residential, are highlighted in orange. After an assessment of how many of these properties are actually built as PUDs, this would probably change. However, these properties can continue as R1, no problem, but I think there is more, there's more flexibility and more opportunities for those properties that have been highlighted as well within the comprehensive plan for a diversity of housing types. You also see in green, many of your undeveloped areas or park areas that are currently, currently zoned R1, those could be downzoned to your development holding district so that nothing happens within them until such a time that they are ready to be developed and go through the subdivision process. Regardless, the existing use on those properties, or especially agricultural uses, will be able to continue. However, the DH district holds them in a much more restrictive way that, for instance, they couldn't just be developed into a single-family parcel. And that is it. And that is it. Are there any discussion items? Or, it sounds like maybe taking some time to think through all of these changes, and then perhaps sending myself and city staff questions or comments, if might be preferred?
Were those maps included in the emails? Would you mind sending out those proposed zoning adjustment maps, if you don't mind?
Please.
Your whole presentation today, did you have it?
Yep, I will send the whole presentation right after the.
Yeah, I'd like to get a close look at the map, so I think that'd be great. Wonderful. Anything else for Laura?
Thanks very much, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura. Have a good evening.
You too, ma'am.
Thanks. Are we all done in this meeting, Mr. Orka?
I had a nice visit with him the other day, actually. He was working on his property. I'll cut to, he's been pretty well out there for a while, I mean, next week again. But, he was hammering away at it, so I mean, it's going to be a process.
Did he get his footings inspected?
Um, you know, I looked out there and I didn't see that. In terms of building permit, do you know, Linda? When he got, when he started putting his footings in, did he get those inspected?
They're already in.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah, no, I walked right past him, but I don't know off the top of my head if they were inspected or not.
Just curious, because that was one point we made, that he had to have those inspected. Because they weren't inspected in the first place.
We'd have to go back and look at the building permit, because I know, I don't know off the top of my head.
I thought it was a verbal thing. I mean, I think as I recall, you know, if he continues with the construction, they'd have to be inspected again. And that's what will happen. I mean, I, out there, didn't know if he was doing anything like with those, but.
I was just, just.
Yeah, if I get out there and I see him doing anything, we'll definitely straight up tell him, so. And he probably will, so. No, I'm good, but no, I wasn't going to visit. You got all the documents, so you can't say he doesn't have those. So, the attorney has a copy, that copy I filed, right, Linda?
Of the file?
The, the copy of the set copy, was going to get it from file, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, that would be a document, which is.
I've actually said that to the county already, and asked them if they needed anything else to file that with this property.
Perfect. I just, we're good on that, right?
And there was also comments about, concerns about the conditional use permit up at Domino's, or something there that you're talking about.
You know, I sent a letter earlier this spring, I can follow up with them again. I haven't seen them, them do anything. I guess the question that I wanted to know is, how serious were those concerns really?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, there was one person who mentioned it, I know. At the same time, somebody said that he owned the property or something like that, or, I don't really know.
That series of events had more questions around it than answers. But I was just curious if there, anything came of it, or.
Not that I know of. I didn't get any responses, and they have made me a motion towards putting up a security.
Sound censoring. With that said, does anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss? Now, we'll go ahead and turn the meeting.
Thank you all. Thanks for having you.
Thank you. We're off, Linda.
So, your final fair review is Thursday morning?
Awesome.
The only issue that, I mean, Brandon talked to you, that he was really concerned about was Stormwater.